I'd like to welcome you all to the January 21st Bryan City Council meeting. The first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from January 6th that are in front of you unless there's any additions or deletions.
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes. As I mentioned before, in a hearing of public concerns, we'd like to keep from the public, keep to a five-minute piece unless there's none, then it's a zero. Seeing none, proceed. Clerk Treasur's report?
The council's been presented with the clerk Treasur's report for the month ending December 31st, 2019.
Or a motion to exempt?
A motion, accept.
I'll second.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes. Item number four, Lori, if you could, number and read, resolution?
Resolution number two, 2020. A resolution authorizing Kerry Schleit as delegate and Thomas Throw as alternate to represent the city of Bryan as a member of the Board of Directors of the Ohio Municipal Electric Association in 2020.
Yes, council, previously, around 5:30 this evening, the BPA also approved this resolution. Since we are an AMP community, there is a position for mayors on an OMEA board seat. With that being said, it's been customary that we give a BPA member the alternate. And I know last year Tom had to fill in for me because I was needed back here for a proclamation in Bryan that day. So, I appreciate his willingness to do that, but also would ask that you approve this resolution.
Motion to suspend?
I'll second.
Mary? Who made the motion?
Who made the motion?
I'll make the motion. It's a fund.
I'll second.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Thank you.
Agenda item number five, a resolution authorizing city of engineer, city of Bryan, read.
Resolution number three, 2020. A resolution authorizing the city engineer of the city of Bryan, Williams County, Ohio, to apply for the following grants: Ohio Public Works Commission, OPWC, Community Development Lot Grant, CDVG, and small cities through the Ohio Department of Transportation and others for the city of Bryan, Williams County, Ohio, as necessary.
Usually I do this, I ask your permission to try and apply for grants. As you know, we've been fairly successful recently, and one of them we're going to kick off here in the next few weeks. We're actually going to start the South William Street Waterline Project, which was funded through Ohio Public Works. I believe it was $275,000 grant funds we got for that. So, I would request you allow me to continue to pursue grants as necessary.
I move to suspend.
I'll second. Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Thank you.
Agenda item number five, a resolution authorizing city of engineer, city of Bryan, read.
Resolution number three, 2020. A resolution authorizing the city engineer of the city of Bryan, Williams County, Ohio, to apply for the following grants: Ohio Public Works Commission, OPWC, Community Development Lot Grant, CDVG, and small cities through the Ohio Department of Transportation and others for the city of Bryan, Williams County, Ohio, as necessary.
Usually I do this, I ask your permission to try and apply for grants. As you know, we've been fairly successful recently, and one of them we're going to kick off here in the next few weeks. We're actually going to start the South William Street Waterline Project, which was funded through Ohio Public Works. I believe it was $275,000 grant funds we got for that. So, I would request you allow me to continue to pursue grants as necessary.
I move to suspend.
I'll second. Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Thank you.
Agenda item number five, a resolution authorizing city of engineer, city of Bryan, read.
Resolution number three, 2020. A resolution authorizing the city engineer of the city of Bryan, Williams County, Ohio, to apply for the following grants: Ohio Public Works Commission, OPWC, Community Development Lot Grant, CDVG, and small cities through the Ohio Department of Transportation and others for the city of Bryan, Williams County, Ohio, as necessary.
Usually I do this, I ask your permission to try and apply for grants. As you know, we've been fairly successful recently, and one of them we're going to kick off here in the next few weeks. We're actually going to start the South William Street Waterline Project, which was funded through Ohio Public Works. I believe it was $275,000 grant funds we got for that. So, I would request you allow me to continue to pursue grants as necessary.
I move to suspend.
I'll second. Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Next resolution, Lori?
Resolution number seven, 2020. A resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to advertise for bids for the project known as 2020 Street Improvement of Mayberry Drive from YMCA entrance to Center Street, Bryan, Ohio.
This is a budgeted line item. It wasn't specifically called out as this project, but it was called out, I believe, as street upgrades or another line item similar to that. About $350,000, we're going to finish the Mayberry Drive project, as it notes there, and do some small parking, not really parking improvements, just overlay the asphalt in that particular area there as well. So, this, I've worked with the Parks and Rec Director on timeframe on it. We want to advertise for bids now, but construction won't actually start until around July 10th, I believe, and we're going to have it wrapped up by early to mid-September. That's a timeframe in the specs when that will be done, which works out best for all the activities in the park. The best time to build in the park is November to April, but we know we can't build a street during that time. So, Ben and I decided this would be the best time, so that's what we're going to shoot for. Advertise now, let the bidders get it in their schedule, and we can coordinate and make it happen. So, I would request you suspend and authorize me to bid this project.
I'll motion to suspend.
I'll second. Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I move to approve.
Second.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I move to adopt. Second. Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes. Item number ten, number and read, please, Lori.
Resolution number six, 2020. A resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to advertise for bids for the project known as 2020 Street Improvement of Mayberry Drive from YMCA entrance to Center Street, Bryan, Ohio.
This is a budgeted line item. It wasn't specifically called out as this project, but it was called out, I believe, as street upgrades or another line item similar to that. About $350,000, we're going to finish the Mayberry Drive project, as it notes there, and do some small parking, not really parking improvements, just overlay the asphalt in that particular area there as well. So, this, I've worked with the Parks and Rec Director on timeframe on it. We want to advertise for bids now, but construction won't actually start until around July 10th, I believe, and we're going to have it wrapped up by early to mid-September. That's a timeframe in the specs when that will be done, which works out best for all the activities in the park. The best time to build in the park is November to April, but we know we can't build a street during that time. So, Ben and I decided this would be the best time, so that's what we're going to shoot for. Advertise now, let the bidders get it in their schedule, and we can coordinate and make it happen. So, I would request you suspend and authorize me to bid this project.
I'll motion to suspend.
I'll second. Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I move to adopt. Second. Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Thank you, and thank Kiwanis.
Next resolution, please.
Resolution number nine, 2020. A resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to advertise for bids for the project known as Bryan Fire Department Burn Building Rebuild.
Good evening. We need to rebuild the fire burn building out at our training center, and I'd like to get that started as soon as construction season starts this spring. So, I would like for you to suspend the rules so that we can get bids out and get the contractor selected, so that we can be ready to go as soon as spring thaw hits.
Is that going to be a full tear down and rebuild?
Yes.
I move to suspend.
I'll second. Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next resolution?
Resolution number ten, 2020. A resolution to adopt the Williams County 2019 to 2023 Hazard Mitigation Plan for the city of Bryan, Williams County, Ohio.
Yes, back in September of 2018, Mayor Schleit and I was asked to sit on the committee for the Hazard Mitigation Plan for Williams County. This included not only the city of Bryan, but it also included all the other towns and villages in the county, as well as some of the unincorporated areas in the county. This plan has been in place since 2005. This plan is designed for when we have major disasters in the county, such as tornadoes, severe thunderstorms, floods, blizzards, anything that causes damage to people or property. The need for the Hazard Mitigation Plan is due to FEMA regulations. We have to have this plan approved and in place, so that in the event that we have a natural disaster or some other type of man-made disaster that gets into a lot of our infrastructure, such as if we lost a major portion of our electrical grid, or we lost the school, or we had a tornado come through and wiped out a quarter of the town, we would have to have a declaration done by the mayor, so that we could reach out and tap some of those federal monies. So, we've had four meetings on this. The plan has been put together. It's been sent to Columbus with approval from Columbus. It's back now. All of the towns and villages and the city of Bryan has to sign off and adopt it, so that it can go to Washington and be approved and adopted as well. So, I'm asking council to suspend the rules and pass legislation to adopt this mitigation plan for the next five years.
I'll motion to suspend.
I'll second. Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Move to adopt. I'll second. Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. You and Lori, the next ordinance?
Ordinance number one, 2020. An ordinance providing three annual appropriations for the city of Bryan for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2020, and declaring an emergency. This is an appropriation request of $50,773 for the 410 Beaman Street Brunacardi Way Project. This is to transfer it back to the half percent income tax. The state reimbursed us the day after the year, end of the year. The second item is for $1,500 for pickleball courts for the Park and Recreation Department, as well as $10,119.16 for the playground equipment. The third item is $400,000 for the burn building rebuild, as requested by fire chief Siders. The fourth item is $4,534.75 to return to the 222 probation grant fund for 2020 and 2021, for funds that were unspent in 2019, as it is a grant they would like that reappropriated. And the same for the final item of $92.45 to be returned to the Justice Reinvestment Incentive Grant Fund for 2021, for monies unspent in 2019. Total amount of appropriation requested, 467,100, oh, sorry, 467,1936.
I move that we approve.
Suspend.
Suspend, excuse me.
I'll second. Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes. Next ordinance, please.
Ordinance number two, 2020. An ordinance providing for the transfer of funds for the city of Bryan for the month ending January 31st, 2020. This is a transfer request of the 410 Beaman Street Brunacardi Way Project to the half percent income tax fund for $50,773. A transfer request from the one percent income tax fund to the 101 General Fund for general spending purposes of $200,000, and a transfer of $84,681.80 from the half percent income tax fund to the 506 wastewater treatment fund. Total amount of transfer requested, 335,454.80.
I'll motion to suspend.
I'll second. Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I'll second. Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes. Please, number and read, next ordinance, you and Lori.
Ordinance number three, 2020. An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to approve a purchase order to Selkirk International for the purchase of a Model 2021 HB507 SFA Packer Rear Loader Cab and Chassis for the Bryan Street Department through the State of Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchasing Program pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 551301B, at a total cost of $74,351.50, hereby waiving the competitive bidding process prescribed by the Ohio Revised Code and pursuant to ORC 5513.01B, in ordinance 33, 2011.
Good evening.
Move.
This is to replace a 2008 garbage truck, and it's in the budget, is approved by the Budget Committee, so...
So, we're taking one out of service and bringing a new one in?
Trading it in, yes.
Oh, okay.
But that's, it's traded into Bell Equipment, which is the next ordinance.
Okay.
I'll motion to suspend.
I'll second. Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I'll move to adopt. I'll second. Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes. Next ordinance?
Ordinance number four, 2020. An ordinance to authorize purchase of Ohio PT 1000 Mobile Refuge Collection Vehicle and related equipment from Bell Equipment Company, Ohio Authorized Dealer, pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 9.48 through the National Joint Power Alliance, thereby waiving the competitive bidding process prescribed by the Ohio Revised Code 127.163B1.
And like it says, this is the back half of the truck, the actual working, the compactor. And then we do trade the old truck in to them, and they're giving us only $7,500 for the old truck.
I'll motion to suspend.
I'll second. Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tyson.
Thank you.
Next ordinance, please.
Ordinance number five, 2020. An ordinance establishing the pay rate scale for seasonal workers in the Parks and Recreation Department of the city of Bryan, making it effective January 22nd, 2020, and rescinding ordinance number three, 2019.
Good evening. In front of you, you should have our part-time seasonal pay scale. The reason that we bring it to you each year is the continuing change in the...
Minimum wage.
Minimum wage. So, each year we go through ours and try to adapt as much as we can to the change in minimum wage, to keep our wages competitive and fair for all of our employees throughout the summer, spring, summer, fall months.
I'll motion to suspend.
I'll second. Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes. To recommission?
Yes.
The nominee?
Before you, you should have a letter from Valinda Lemons stating her intention to resign from the tree commission. Valinda served on the tree commission the past couple of years, and is just busy with a couple of other things, and would like to resign from her seat on the tree commission.
I'd like to move with regret to accept her resignation from the tree commission.
I'll second. Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Chapo?
I want to start off with Jared McCann putting in his resignation. He is leaving us. His last day will be February 2nd, 2020. He says, "After careful thought and decision, I've accepted the position with another organization, and feel has a better opportunity for growth and development." Mr. McCann is going to want to say on fire. So, he will be leaving us.
Make a motion to accept with regret. I'll second. Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And the next two is the conditional, it's 20 and 21, the conditional offer and request for hire. It's kind of confusing, they're both the same gentleman. Let's go ahead and do the conditional offer. Mr. Younts is a student, I believe it's Wright State, he's going through their academy, and he passed our civil service. We've done some background. We want to get him in the system, offer him a offer of employment once he's done with his academy, completion of state mandated certificate testing, which he will be done his academy, completion of state mandated certificate testing, which he will be done by April, and then all the pre-employment medical examinations we do, which is psychological, psychological and a physical test. Once he does that, we will start him in the FTO.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And then, in the meantime, I am requesting that we hire Mr. Younts as a part-time dispatcher. That gets us to know him, him to know the city. He will learn how to talk on the radio, learn the streets, learn the people in the organization, and members of the community through dispatch, which gives him a foot up in going into our FTO program. So, he'll have more of an understanding what police work actually is since he's coming out of the academy.
Could you say his name for us again?
You had to do that, didn't you?
Yes.
Ian Younts is how I pronounce Younts.
Younts.
But that doesn't mean I'm pronouncing it right until he gets here and he tells me a couple of times.
Well, if not, we apologize to you.
Yeah, I could be murdering it pretty good, but I'm not positive. We'll go with that for now. I'm sure you guys didn't know my last name when I started.
You can't get any worse than Yarris.
I don't know. Cozumplik is right up there.
Can we all just note the spelling? I did it right, didn't I?
You did.
We tripped and checked.
I move to approve. I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resignation from the Street Department?
Unfortunately, Aaron Mavis has turned in his resignation as a mechanic at the Street Department. He's taken a job with ODOT, and last Friday, the seventeenth, was his last day.
I'll make a motion to accept with regret.
I'll second.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And with that, I would like your permission to post the position of mechanic for the Street Department.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
I'll second. Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that a record number of resolutions, or is it just?
I think it was.
It was a long day getting ready for that. I would actually like to thank Lori and Melanie and Natasha because they worked really hard to get this agenda together, and it was abnormally long. And Natasha's computer decided to reboot the morning that we were gonna get it out to you, so there was a bit of a delay. So, I would like to thank them for that.
Well, thank you much, because it was a lot. There's a lot to review, go over, ask questions about, and there's a lot to go through tonight, so thank you to all, and for those who've had to tolerate that as well. What I'd like to do is, the charter review discussion, I'd like, before reading an alternative idea and passing it out, I'd like to say a few words about the alternative idea to ordinance forty-six, two thousand nineteen, which, if those of you can remember, was done back in October. We have done two readings. It is pending a third reading. We hit pause and said, "Let's take a look at this and do further discussion." In that process, there's another, I've come up with another potential alternative, which was and still is solely intended to allow the citizens of Bryan to determine what form of government they would like to see. So, I'd like to make a few remarks. After being approached both during my council campaign and post-election by a number of people, and I'm not talking about five or ten, regarding the necessity of having both a BPA and council, followed by two and a half years of attending city council meetings, and about eighty percent of the BPA meetings, I too wondered if Bryan could function better under a different governing structure, hence that initial proposal of forty-six, two thousand nineteen. It seems as though we should all want the best governing structure for Bryan that's both effective and efficient and communicating with the community and city employees, and allow the people to decide what form of government they want. I believe this alternative is better both in process and outcome, and is for review and discussion only for both city council and the BPA, culminating in a joint meeting to so discuss after each body is ready to do so. So, when I pass this out, I will read through it, and we can have discussion, and that means, you know, first maybe council and BPA have any questions, but the general thought is probably you're gonna wanna read it and think about it and kinda discuss it in the same way here. And if anybody has any questions, they can call me, you guys, not you. You guys can call me individually, and I can answer those. Otherwise, we will discuss it on February the third. BPA can discuss it at their leisure and interest and need. And then, I'd like to have a joint meeting where we would, with BPA, where we would discuss it jointly, and I think Mr. Long has another item that he'd also like to discuss, so we'll probably have two agenda items when we have that, okay? Yeah, hand it out if you could. This is not that dramatic. It's just that I wanted to make sure everybody got at the same time, this is the way I can do that.
I assume, I'm sorry, Mr. Younts.
Yeah, that's okay.
Mr. Wheeler, do you have enough?
I can only give you seven copies.
Well, I have, I think I have.
There's more if people want them. Yeah, it's not, this is not some kind of a secret government document, that's for sure. So, I will read through this. I mean, you can read ahead of me and do whatever you want, but whereas, this is in a draft, whereas the objective of city government should be to represent and serve the public and city employees in the most effective and efficient manner with consistent and clear lines of communication while being accountable and transparent, the following three questions are for each council and BPA member to contemplate and answer to themselves or collectively. Do you believe Bryan's current governance structure can be improved to meet the objective above? Second, what do you believe is the most efficient and effective governing structure to meet the goal of streamlining our local government to be more effective and efficient while maintaining equal area representation and being accountable and transparent through increased, consistent, clear communication with all city departments and the community? Third, and if you believe the current governance structure meets this goal, do you believe the people of Bryan should have the right to vote on what they believe might be a possible better governance structure? Or should council vote for them by proposing no alternative? Since a proper governmental structure is crucial to assure the goal and number two above is met, the following governmental structure proposal is being presented for discussion as a possible alternative to the third reading of ordinance forty-six, two thousand nineteen. Other governance alternatives which achieve the goals stated above are welcome. This is not, no one's saying this is the greatest thing since sliced bread. A proposed alternative to ordinance forty-six, two thousand nineteen, to submit a charter change before July twentieth of this year to take to the voters on November third of twentieth this year, that starting on one-one-twenty-one through twelve-thirty-one-twenty-one, Bryan would go from five council members to ten. That is, all five current BPA members would become at-large council representatives from one-twenty-one-twenty-one through twelve-thirty-one-twenty-one, along with all five current council members. During this one-year timeframe, any council votes ending in a five-five tie would be broken by the mayor. We would need to submit, get our committees together as well, which would be established with appropriate representation. In November of two thousand twenty-one's election, three new or re-elected officials would be elected from wards one, two, and three, starting on one-one-twenty-two, with three at-large members. So, starting on one-one-twenty-two, council would then consist of seven members. Judy Yarris representing ward four. Here, here we go, Jim. Jim Cozumplik?
Yeah.
At-large council, Representative Tom Sproul and Annette Schreiner would also be at-large council members with all four of their current terms ending on twelve-thirty-one-twenty-three. The remaining three open council seats, beginning on one-one-twenty-two, that's ward one, two, and three, would be voted on at the eleven-two thousand twenty-one election and could be filled by the following. Mary Leatherman's from ward one, Richard Hoopies from ward two, John Betts is from ward three, or Karen Ward is from ward three. Dick, did I say, what did I say?
Karen.
Karen Ward, I'm sorry, Karen. Karen Ford, that rhymes with ward, I'm sorry. Karen Ford is also from ward three, and Dick Long, ward two, and Jim Salisbury, ward one, or obviously, anyone else who wishes to run in the eleven-two thousand twenty-one election from those respective wards for council. And the people attached, the second page is attached that documents who's on what avenue, that's directly from a public records request for the Board of Elections. That's why it says, "See," the detail attached. In short, starting one-one-twenty-one, BPA and council would be on the same team, and BMU would be under the governance of this new BPA council ten-member team, and the mayor, like all other city departments. The final seven-member council-BPA mix, starting one-one-twenty-two, would be determined by both the candidate's choice to run and the voter's choice of candidates. I believe this graduated plan addresses the goal of governance stated above, that is, it streamlines government, it provides an appropriate representation from each ward while stimulating more interest from others to run as at-large candidates, it incorporates BPA into council thereby keeping both council and BPA's expertise while providing more consistent communication and accountability transparency in real time to the community and city employees, and allows the public to see how their city governance is all working for what is best for Bryan. So, as I mentioned earlier, I will go over the second page, but as I'm, and you certainly are welcome to, that's why I handed it up, but the next step is after we discuss here or at council, I'll ask you guys if you have any questions right now or any discussion right now. If you don't, we'll discuss this again on February third. Then, I'll ask BPA if you have anything right now, then you guys can discuss it, and then we will have a joint meeting to discuss this proposal. So, with that, fellow council folk, anything?
So, basically, what you're saying is you're not going to just ban BMU, you're going to combine them.
Well, it's BPA, but yes.
BPA.
Yes. That's correct.
So, for clarification purposes?
Sure.
Can I actually ask?
Absolutely.
For sure. There's nothing to be redacted from this, so when people come from the public and want a copy, I just can make them a copy, right? I didn't see any identifiers that would need.
It's all public information, right, from the Board of?
I just anticipate that it will probably come, the request will come to my office, so I wanna make sure. Good, and I think.
And it out to anybody you want to.
Okay. And then, Max, you promised to write an article if it came up again.
Yeah, this, this was the paper.
Yeah, that's, I just wanted to make sure, because I know Mr. Metz was worried that things would get sprung and not publicized, so I just wanna make sure you're gonna write that. Thank you.
And it's a process. This is, there is no outcome. There is no outcome that's gonna be voted on tonight, and there'll be further discussion for more process, and then we'll have an outcome eventually. Any other questions, or, I mean, because we're gonna discuss it again. I know it's something, a lot, I mean, this wasn't done overnight, so I don't expect you to be able to do it all at once either. And if you wanna call me individual, you can and ask questions, and then we can discuss it at the February third meeting. BPA folk, any question, anything that right now hits you, or?
A lot to digest.
Yeah.
I need this a lot to read over, pick up.
No, go ahead, Tom.
I'd like to know who drafted this?
Me.
Hello?
Yes. Way to eat them cookies. Pretty neat, huh?
Just asking.
Yeah, I put it together. I drafted it, and then I ran it by legal to make sure, is this something that can even be done? Can you go from five to ten? I mean, I didn't know that, so I did, but quite frankly, I believe, and I'm certainly not speaking for, I believe Ms. Fisher will tell you that this is probably the first time she's seen this draft. This has gone through probably, seriously, fifty iterations on my part, fifty drafts over the last almost two months, six to eight, six to seven weeks. I've drafted it and redrafted it, drafted it and redrafted it, changed words, then I took it to legal and said, "Is this even doable?" And I believe that's a yes at this point, unless I'm gonna get surprised right now.
No, I think it was just, can you do this with the charter?
Yes.
But, and I will say that he came up late in the afternoon on Friday and asked Natasha to make copies of this for everyone, but that's, he has drafted this on his own.
John, I assume this would require a charter?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Because you're going from, it would be a twofold, that was one of the questions I had for Rhonda, was if it's gonna go from five to ten and then ten to three, can you do that in a response?
Ten to seven.
Ten to seven, I'm sorry.
We don't need.
Sorry about that, ten to seven. The answer is, yes, you can do that all in one charter change. I didn't wanna do two.
Might be a good time to review and update the charter, too.
Yeah, I think, I think that's another possibility, the, depending on what you mean, and we can discuss it further, but depending on what you mean, historically, it has not gone well to the public to go with multiple changes with the charter. It typically has been too much, so we'd have to kinda give that some thought, but yeah.
I mean, I'm just thinking, a lot of that stuff is so outdated.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and I think there's a lot, as I, I think I wrote in here at some point on the second page, it's like life. We evolve. This isn't something that, two years from now, maybe, maybe it changes as well. Maybe other things occur and happen. I have done a little bit of research on other towns similar to our size, and seven is not a unmanageable number for the city of our size.
Seven's actually about an average.
Yeah, seems like it is.
At ten or.
Yeah. So, you know, give it some, give it some thought, you know, talk about it, you guys talk about it. I'll be at your meetings anyway. If you have questions, you can call me, you can actually talk to me, they can talk to me collectively, right? No?
Well, not.
Okay. I don't wanna tell you any. Okay, you can't do that, you talk to me individually if you want.
Fair and see, public needs to be informed.
Okay. So, if you have questions, you can call me or whatever. I'll be at your meetings, too, if you have questions that way. Sure.
My gut wants to ask, what led you to think something like this would be an option?
Sure.
You said at the beginning, you've talked to a lot of people?
Yeah.
And you've talked about this for a number of months.
Yes.
Is it because you're getting strong opinions from certain people about?
Nah.
You know, the government?
Yeah, I'm getting, I'm getting, I've been getting some ongoing conversation about the fact that is this the best that we can do? And it has nothing, no one has ever mentioned personal, nothing like any BMU employee or any BPA or any council. It has never been personal. It's just been, is this, is this a good way to do business when you have two islands? Is it better to have one island and the communication is in real time? As I think I mentioned in here, some people have brought up, quite frankly, to answer your question, this evolved from, from what I hope was me listening to people saying basically two things, as I recall, many more than that, but two things that I hung my hat on. One is, let's slow down. You might remember that one. Let's, let's slow down. Two is, you know, you're getting rid of a lot of the BPA experience dealing with this, by this. So, those two kind of held some water with me, and then I have read, I have read a lot, seven hundred pages actually, of the evolution of the Bryan Municipal Utilities, and also a number of articles, which I think was sent to a lot of different people, dealing with charter changes from, since nineteen forty. And I read all of those from forty up to ninety, ninety-something or other, I think, as to what went on. And then, I also did some discussion with people from ninety-nine, the two thousand one era, where there was discussion about, should we make a charter change here and just all come together? And so, I talked with some of those people, and so, some of those ideas came from that, that collection. I mean, there's been so much information that it's really hard for me to, I'd be glad to, but it's, it's just a lot of people that I've listened to kind of hopefully incorporated and or diluted and taken parts and said, "This may make the most sense in terms of us being on the same page on an ongoing basis and so that we don't have to go to two different meetings all the time," and that kind of thing. It seemed like it was more effective and efficient. It was always more of an issue with that, with communication. It kinda got out of hand, in my opinion, with the money issue, and I think it got out of hand, and I'll take responsibility for that, the way it was presented. I think that, that went our own, but not this time. This is a process. Let's see where, let's see where it leads. Go from there. Did I answer? Okay. No, sure. Well, let's kinda, okay, to leave it, okay. We'll leave it there, and then I think the next thing is to go around the room. So, and to remember what we're doing is, I do city employees, that means like everybody. So, if you're a city employee, you got something you wanna say, you'll say it. So, I'll do city employees, and I'll do BPA, then I'll do media, and then I'll do council, and I'll just, I won't even say, if it's okay, but I'll say, you just start with Jim and go down. So, are there any city employees who have any comments they'd like to make? The reason we're doing this way is because we give the public the stuff upfront, but I think city employees and BPA and people that sit through this may have questions after we're done that are more important. BPA, sure, go ahead.
I have a question. Of course, all your email addresses are published on the website. Do we have a directory for your individual phone numbers?
I believe that was emailed to Sylvia this week, last week. Yes. And I, and it has like cellphone numbers on it, too, so that you can reach the council member.
And I just got your personal cellphone from Jim, so I wanna say that publicly? He gave you up, baby. And no, but you can have mine, too.
Yeah, because I didn't have.
Yeah.
Your worst need or something.
Yeah.
Okay. Answer is my question.
Okay. Where'd I left, well, here, any city employees, media, any?
I'd like to thank the Kiwanis for their donation. I'd like to thank Park View for, again, for their debibulators to the Parks Department. I saw that in the paper.
Yeah.
I'd like to thank those employees who resigned for their service, and you will be missed. Thank you.
I'm gonna start off by saying, it sounds like we're gonna have a busy summer with the engineering department this year.
I'll go with the girls.
Well, we're getting used to that, so.
You're welcome.
That's all right, that's all right. It keeps our city looking pretty darn good when we have roads that are, that are looking good. I'll echo the thank for the Kiwanis and their donation. That was very nice, and we have been treated very well by Kiwanis. The mitigation plan, coming from education, I'm a strong believer in being proactive, not reactive, and that's what plans like that do. We hope to God we never have to put those into action, but it's good to be prepared in case we do. Next item, I just wanna thank Jared McCann for his contribution to the city and best of luck in the future. Known him for a little while and wish him the best of luck. And I, by that, I also wanna welcome Mr. Younts to the City of Bryan and hope to, wish the best of luck to him. And finally, I just wanna say, this, the charter change, it's gonna take a little bit to digest all the changes, everything that's in there. My guess is that the page and a quarter that we have here, I've never seen anything that would be as involved as a charter change only sit on a page and a quarter, so I'm assuming that there will be a lot added to this over time. And I just wanna remind people that those of us that sit up here cannot make this happen. This is something that, in order for our charter to change, it will have to go to the voters, and so be informed and keep us informed on what your wishes are as we move forward. And I've said that time and time again. I've never seen an issue that can't be discussed, and I think this is a prime example of that. We need to look at it, look at it closely. I've had some people that have con- I've had some people that have contacted me and both, on both sides of the issue. And I'm sure that we're going to have a lot of good discussion as we move forward. And that's all I have.
First, welcome to Mr. Yost. And I also would like to say thanks to Valinda Lemmons, Jared McCann, and Aaron Mavis for their service to our city. It's those kind of people that help this city keep running. Thanks to the Kiwanis for what they've done for us again. Also, Parks Department, wonderful, wonderful walking today in the park, very little ice. I didn't have to worry about falling people, that was great. Thanks, Ben, it was great. Also, Mr. Betts, thank you very much for the way you presented this tonight. I appreciate that.
Thanks.
That's it.
I also would like to thank Ms. Lemmons, Jared McCann, and Aaron Mavis for their service with the city and welcome Mr. Yount. I think I said it right, maybe? And then also thank the Kiwanis and Parkview because I appreciate what Parkview has done.
Lori?
No, sir.
Ms. Fisher? Mayor?
Well, I'm going to sound a little bit like a broken record. I would also like to thank Valinda for her service on the tree commission. Valinda has been a staple in the city of Bryan for a number of years in many different facets that I believe started working with Judge Kiyats. So she's a huge civil servant in my mind and I appreciate the time that she's given us. And if anyone is interested in becoming a tree commission member, please let Ben Dominic know. Also like to wish Jared and Aaron Mavis, Jared McCann and Aaron Mavis, the best. I think, you know, we're missing two good employees and I, and I hope nothing but the best for them. Also would like to thank Mary and the Kiwanis for their donation. I hope Rosalyn gets used just as much as Easton because the kids, I can see that from my window at work, so it's nice to see them go over.
There's hopefully one more donation coming, hopefully.
Okay. We'll keep our fingers crossed. And also Parkview on that AED project was something that was near and dear to the Parks Department and I appreciate their help in seeing that through. Also, I gave this update at BMU, but I will also do it tonight. Last week, late last week, the utility contacted me and we decided to submit Bryan for the HGTV Home and Garden Rehab My City. So today, Eric Herman and I went out with Russ Davies because we thought it'd be great to have a local, longtime business owner video some areas of Bryan. We'll continue to do that throughout the week. There is a potential that we may ask you to show up on the Courthouse Square for a giant picture if we can work that out. So if that's the case, I'll just text you and let you know a time and place, but we're, we're not sure. We kind of had another idea today that we're going to see if we can't pull through. But it's been a lot of fun, a lot of collaboration, and even if we don't get picked, which I can't imagine anyone not picking Bryan, Ohio, it has been really refreshing to remind myself today as I'm going through the jewels and the gems and some of the not-so-bright spots of Bryan, why I became mayor. So it was a good day for that. Thank you.
Yeah, I, very, very quickly, everyone hit on all of the ones, people that I had down except one, but I want to also reiterate the thanks to the physicians group for their donation. I was very impressed with that and that has a large potential of saving lives as we already know based on last, I believe it was like February or March of last year, the high school. So, and also the thanks to the Kiwanis for their, their park donation. Wishes to Jared and Aaron both and to Valinda as well. Thank you for, for all your service, for all those people. I'd also like to thank Brian Wieland, you got kudos at BPA, but I think you ought to also get it at city council. There's a lot of money that exchanges hands that he and his folks are bringing in, which is very helpful to this city. So I want to thank Brian for that as well, okay? And with that, I just go into?
Brief recess.
A brief recess to go into executive session, right? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.